Good evening. My name is Dawn Hunter. I'm the Executive Director of the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce. And welcome to the Vineland Board of Education School Board Candidates Forum 2015. We are pleased to host this annual program, and I will be the moderator for this evening's forum. We want to thank Wallace School for providing this venue, and thank you to the Vineland Public Schools Broadcasting Group for taping the event. This forum will be available for viewing as a program on our local channels, 9 and 41, multiple times prior to the election. Thank you to the candidates for your participation in this forum. I think it's important to make note that this is not an easy thing to do. The candidates are not provided any questions in advance, and most people are not in their comfort zone on a stage with lights on them, and so we understand that, and we give you a lot of credit for doing this. The seven candidates are seated in alphabetical order on the stage. Five candidates here this evening are campaigning for three, three-year term open seats, and two of the candidates are campaigning for the one, one-year seat finishing out an unexpired term. They are Inez Acosta. She is an incumbent board member seeking reelection for a three-year term. Xavier Cardona seeking election to a three-year term seat. Donald Carter Jr. seeking election to the one-year term seat. Cedric Holmes seeking election to a three-year term seat. Christopher Jennings, who is also an incumbent board member seeking reelection for a three-year term. And John Sabrana seeking election to the one-year term seat. As a courtesy to our candidates and everyone in attendance this evening, please make sure your cell phones are turned off for the duration of the forum. The format for tonight's forum is each candidate will have 90 seconds for an opening statement, two minutes to answer each question, and 90 seconds for a closing statement. Our timekeeper this evening is Kathy Panta Leone from the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce. She's seated in the front row and will signal you with a yellow card at 20 seconds remaining in your allotted time, and a red card when your time has expired. When your time has expired, you may finish your sentence but not continue. I will call on you to answer a question in the order that you're seated, and these questions have been prepared with input from our chamber members, our board directors, our legislative committee, and from previous school board forums. We will begin with your one-minute opening statements, and we'll start with Ms. Acosta. You want to turn on your microphones? There you go.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for having this forum and for inviting us here today. I am seeking a position as a three-year member of the Vineland Board of Education. I'm currently sitting, I believe it was January 24th of this year where the board selected me to fill in for a vacancy. My motivation for seeking this office is simple. We, as a community of stakeholders, need to invest in our Vineland Public Schools to ensure that every student is fully prepared for the next stage of their life, whether from grade to grade or after graduation. The district has made many positive strides, and under difficult financial circumstances, but there's still a lot of work to do. In the short run, we understand that, given the dynamics and the very complicated issues that arise in running a school district of 11,000 students, the most important thing that we have and that we need to do is support our children and encourage the community to invest in the most precious tool that, or I'm sorry, the most precious asset that we have for our future, and that is our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardona.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Xavier Cardona, and I would like to start off by thanking Ms. Hunter, the Vineland Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, and the Vineland School District for allowing it to take place in Wallace Middle School. This past June, I graduated from Vineland High School, ending my 13 years in the Vineland Public School System. Before graduating, I served as the president of the German Club. I was an honor student and a member of Vineland's Model Congress. I am proud of the education that I received from Vineland, which is why I have decided to run for school board. Vineland has an amazing school district, and I have always wanted to give back to this community for so much that they have given to me. Moving from Plant City, Florida at the age of three, the community of Vineland, along with the school system, welcomed me with open arms. Ever since then, I have always felt a deep appreciation and gratitude towards this city. I am beyond excited and motivated to be given the chance of becoming a school board member who will truly make a difference. I look forward to answering your questions tonight and hope that my confidence and courage convinces the entire city that I am capable of revitalizing Vineland's education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
Good evening. I would like to thank Dawn Hunter and the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce for hosting this event, the Vineland Public Schools Broadcasting Crew for filming, and the people in the audience for showing your support to all the candidates here tonight. My name is Don Anthony Carter, and I am a 2015 summa cum laude graduate of Vineland High School. I have gone to Vineland Public Schools since kindergarten. In high school, I was involved in many clubs, including Interact, Academic Team, Model Congress, and the National Honor Society. I have not only served in leadership capacities in school, but also outside of school. In 2012, I was inducted into the National Society of High School Scholars, and in 2014 was appointed as the State Director and Ambassador for the New Jersey's Chapter of the National Society of High School Scholars. From a very young age, I chose to devote my life to service in my church as a former volunteer at the New Jersey Veterans Memorial Home and as a member of Congressman Frank LoBiondo's Youth Advisory Council. I was named Vineland's Hometown Hero in 2012 and a both an Eagle Scout and an ordeal member of the Order of the Arrow, Scouting's National Honor Society. I am currently attending Cumberland County College, majoring in Liberal Arts through the NJ Stars Program. I am an executive board member for the Cumberland County College Rotarack Club. After Cumberland, I had the intentions of going to college in Washington DC as international politics major. I am running for the school board this year because I believe that my desire to serve the people of this great community and to enable the students in our schools to reach the fullest potential is merely a small way of paying back all that has been afforded to me through my years in the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes.
Good evening. I would like to thank Ms. Dawn Hunter and the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce for hosting this forum. I would also like to thank Wallace for opening their doors for this event, the VPS TV crew, and the entire audience for coming to learn about each of the candidates. As a VHS graduate of 2015, while in school, I served as club administrator and board member of Interact Club. I was also acting treasurer of Key Club. I also had the privilege of being part of Model Congress and Search for Conscience. As the secretary of the VHS Select Choir, I had the privilege of performing in the prestigious Carnegie Hall in New York City. I am most proud of my service as a mentor at Winslow School for Big Brothers Big Sisters, by which I was named Big Brother of the Year. I am currently studying at Cumberland County College, majoring in Education. I am the president of the Rotarack Club at CCC, and I'm a musician at Union Baptist Temple in Bridgeton, New Jersey. Attending Vineland Public Schools since the third grade, I had firsthand experience on how our schools are being run. I am running to give back to this community and ensure that our students have a future. I look forward to answering all of your questions tonight, and very excited about being a part of this election. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us here and taking the time out to afford this opportunity for us. I'd like to say I have served three years on this school board, and obviously, I know more now than I knew my first year, and I've put in a lot of time and effort into being part of this board and part of this district. And I feel I have done what has been expected of a board member, and I managed to remain neutral and make decisions on, by what is right, and not by anyone's agenda or pressure that has been put on the board, which sometimes occurs. We have 11,000 students, 2,500 employees. I've spent 51 years in this city. I have a lot of pride and roots in this city, and I would like to say that these three gentlemen are the results of what our board has provided to this city. We have people proud of their education, summa cum laude, Interact Club, just fantastic results from what we have done. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd also like to thank Dawn and the chamber for hosting this event. My name is Faustino Sabrana, but most people know me as John. I'm a lifelong resident of Vineland and a proud 1968 graduate of Vineland High School. I have two sons, both VHS grads, and three grandchildren who have attended Vineland Public Schools. Two of my three siblings are retired educators, and my wife of five years is a 33-year education professional who worked in Mays Lanning, who is now an adjunct professor at Rowan University. I have a bachelor's degree in Communications and Journalism and a 45-year career almost entirely devoted to media, radio, TV, and newspapers. Since 1995, my job as coordinator and later as director of communications has been to protect and enhance the image of Vineland Public Schools with a broad range of media initiatives. In this regard, I have attended all but a handful of the hundreds of meetings of the Board of Education, and during this time, I have worked with many local government agencies, community and public service organizations, and numerous social groups. I am retiring from this position in December, but I can think of no better way to start the next stage of my life than to serve the interests of the students, staff, the administration, and taxpayers of Vineland as a board of education member. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'd like to welcome Mr. Jeffrey Boardley, and he is seeking election to a three-year term seat, so Mr. Boardley will hear your opening statement.
Thank you. My apologies for being a little late. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First, I'd like to thank the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this event and for providing me an opportunity to present myself as a candidate for the Vineland Board of Education. My name is Jeffrey Boardley. I'm a lifelong resident of Vineland. I attended Vineland High School, Cumberland County College, Cape May County and Gloucester County Police Academies, and I am a graduate of the National Fire Academy. I'm an appreciative husband to my supportive wife of 11 years, Beth, and a very proud father of three exceptional children. My oldest, Juliana, is 14. She's a sophomore at Vineland High School. I have a 10-year-old daughter, Mia, who also attends Vineland Public Schools at Winslow, and my son Chase is a kindergartner, five years old, at Winslow as well. I'm an officer with the Briston Police Department, where I've served since 2004. During my service there, I've held the positions of detective, patrolman, fire investigator, and acting supervisor. I'm also a volunteer with the Cumberland County Fire and Mosses Office since 2015. I'm a member of several professional organizations related to my career, including New Jersey Policemen's Benevolent Association, New Jersey Homicide Investigators Association, the New Jersey International Association of Arson Investigators, and the National Association of Fire Investigators. As a young child, I was a member of the Vineland Basketball Association, East Vineland Little League, South Vineland Little League, and a wrestler for Vineland High School. I've served and continue to serve as coach and manager for the East Vineland Little League and the Pigtail League, as well as Vineland Soccer Association. I seek office to continue to serve our children in a more impactful way. I believe in paying it forward, which has inspired me to work for children in the community that have served me as a child. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Now we'll proceed to the questions, and we'll start with Ms. Acosta. As an incumbent school board member, what do you think is the current school board's proudest accomplishment over the last three years?
Well, I can only speak for, at least from what I have seen, and as an incumbent this year, I would have to say that just the true and complete altruistic dedication and commitment that I have seen, not only from the superintendent down to each of the administrators, but also of the teachers. We were faced with very difficult and real fiscal deficits in the budget. However, through a lot of work, through collaboration, through communication, we were able to work with the budget, balance the budget in a responsible way, so as to be able to continue to serve the needs of every child, and I'm very, very proud of that. I'm also very proud of the curriculum, or some of the innovative ideas, some of the wonderful work that we're doing in terms of providing new programs to our students and moving this district forward. I have to say, the park was quite a very long, challenging testing period, but Vineland, through its planning, through its dedication and hard work, through the use of its technology, really did an excellent job. So I'm very proud of the students also for having had to endure the difficulties of this new test, but yet going forward and doing very, very well. So thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boardley. The Vineland School Board functions on a committee system. As a board member, which committee would you hope to serve on and why?
I would actually like to serve on a couple of different committees, specifically the budget committee. I feel that I may be able to present some new ideas, possibly save some money for the district, and kind of close the gap with the shortfall on the budget. The curriculum is another committee that I'm interested in. I believe that the children benefit from the arts program, and I would like to see if we can develop a greater arts program for the city of Vineland. Specifically, my children like theater, music, things of that nature. I think our school has a good system now. I'm just very curious as how we can expand upon that and bring benefits to our children and the things that they enjoy to do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cardona. What do you see as the primary work and responsibility of the Board of Education?
I would have to say the primary role of the Board of Education is oversight. It's to make sure that the district is following the path that the administration has set forth. The board isn't there to micromanage or to have its hands in everything. It's more of a governing body there to oversee the way that the administration is working and to ensure that the district is heading in the correct direction with district goals and being there at every board meeting. Board members are there to ensure that this district is on the right path and that the administration can be, what's the word, counted on, that there's a balance between the administration and the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter. What personal values do you possess that you feel would make you an effective board member if you are elected?
Personally, I'm someone who is interested in wanting to learn more. Going into the Board of Education, many people don't fully understand how a $200 million budget works, or how schools are completely run and operated, but I am someone who was willing to take the time to do the research, you know, between board meetings. I won't just be the person to go to the two meetings a month and, you know, just vote yes or no. I'd be someone who takes the time out of my schedule to research and learn the new information. I'm also someone who has integrity and would not use this position to, you know, benefit anyone that doesn't belong, that doesn't need to have any benefit as far as, you know, doing certain things for people as favors. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes. What do you see as the top two challenges that the Vineland School District is facing right now?
Top two challenges are definitely the budget, and also, I believe, the difference between policy and making sure that our students are getting good education. I think, as far as the budget goes, I think that we're entering a $10 million deficit, so I believe that that's a huge problem. And as far as the policy and education goes, I believe that we're putting too much emphasis on policies and not so much on teaching our children. Teachers are taking too much time out to deal with referrals and write-ups throughout the day, and not really, they don't really have time to teach in those 40 minutes that they, or at least at the high school level, at those 40 minutes that they have. So I think that those are the two issues facing our district now.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings. As an incumbent, you've had some experience with the school system's budget. What are your thoughts regarding compensation for teachers, specifically implementing wage freezes?
That's a tough one, Dawn.
Well, they can't all be easy, right?
Yeah. I think, I think we need to be practical. I think that's the word we need to use here. We need to be practical, and we need to understand that we only have so much money to work with, and we, you know, we could be like Atlantic City and just throw out pink slips to everybody and 400 pink slips and fire 260 people, but we're not a board that does that. We have a president that is fully aware and fully involved in our budget process and is constantly working with the superintendent and the departments of this school to work to cut, and cut where it doesn't hurt, where it doesn't hurt the education of the children, because that is what is most important here, is educating our children. And our teachers need to know that we care about everything that they do, and we know that they're home grading papers on their off-hours, and they're not getting paid for that, and we understand that, and that is part of being a teacher. And part of being a board member is spending the time at night and during our off-time to visit schools and every opportunity to be in touch with everyone that is involved with educating our children, and I think that's what this board has done, and I think that's what this board will continue to do, especially if I am reelected. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana. Briefly describe what factors you believe are necessary to have a positive, productive relationship with school administration and specifically the superintendent.
I think it's necessary to put personal differences aside and work towards a consensus. That's the only way you're going to have effective management of your schools and a district that's moving forward and not mired in petty arguments and disagreements.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Acosta. Round two. What are your opinions about creating an educational structure with relevant learning experiences for students through internships, mentoring, programs like that, or learning academies?
I love that question. I am a huge, huge proponent of expanding the learning experiences of children from the classroom out into our community, so that they can actually see how, what they learn in the classroom is applied in the real world. My child currently, I have a seventh-grade son who is in the Applied Math and Science Academy, so I've seen firsthand the academy structure and how it positively impacts students when they can actually take what they're learning, all the hard work that they put into it, and then go out and actually either create or do something, or experience an opportunity out in the real world where they can actually see what they're learning implemented and really understand how it works. I think that that connection between not only enhances the children's education, but I think the connection also with the community and the students is so very important. I think that if we have students that feel cared for, supported by our community, they're going to be successful students and productive members of our society. They face a lot of challenges, technology is ever-changing, and we as a community can certainly do our part to be able to enhance their education, and I really look forward to working with the community. We've discussed in our curriculum meetings other academy programs and opportunities that we can take advantage of where the community can help support the education of our students.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boardley. What do you believe is the role of the board when dealing with personnel issues such as staff appraisals, requests for promotions, hiring personnel, et cetera?
I believe that the board, in that role, has to rely on the superintendent's recommendations, as well as doing their due diligence to make sure it's the right move for the district when voting upon that. But I strongly believe that the board looks for the superintendent. They choose the best superintendent for what we're looking to move forward on for education and personnel issues. So I believe that, my opinion would be strongly on the recommendation of the superintendent, as well as the due diligence of the board.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cardona. Who is responsible for preparing the annual school budget, and what is the board's role in that process?
Well, to the best of my knowledge, it's the administration and the superintendent that would come up with the budget, and from there, once they have created their budget, they would give it to the board, and the board would look at it and amend it, and then, once they found a satisfactory version, that could work for the entire district that the administration and the board could agree on, they would then go to a vote, and it would either pass or fail.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter. If a parent approaches you directly with a complaint about a teacher, what would be the first thing you would do to resolve the issue, and how should the process work after that?
I strongly believe in the chain of command. Going directly to a board member with an issue that occurs in a school should be dealt with at the school first. It should be brought up with the administration at the school, you know, or if there is a teacher, an issue with the teacher, it should be brought to by the teacher, then the administration at the school, and then, you know, it should be followed up the steps to the superintendent. But going directly to the top is not, you know, is not the best way to govern, is not the best way to get the proper results. You need to start from the bottom and work your way up.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holmes. If you were to create a newsletter communicating the school board's work, what two issues would you focus on to provide continual updates?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Two, like, issues that the board has had?
Yeah, you want to communicate out to the community through a newsletter, something about what the school board is doing, their activities. So what top two things would you focus on?
Oh, definitely meetings. As you can see tonight, this is probably how board meetings are at Plum Street. There's not much great turnout, and not many people come out, so I think that publicizing those meetings and putting more emphasis on them, making sure that all of our community comes out, is a big one. We're entering budgeting season, so probably that one, wherever the budgeting meeting is going to be, we need to make a big headline about that and make sure that our community comes out and is involved in the budgeting process and gives input, positive input, or where they see we can make some cuts and stuff like that.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings. I've been told there are some areas of Vineland where bus service is not available to students, and it's dangerous for them to walk to school because of lack of sidewalks. How do you think this issue should be addressed?
Well, in the past, I have Well, in the past, um, I have been to City Hall myself, um, discussing with the council members that we need sidewalks. We need sidewalks leading to these, these schools and there has been progress made. If anyone has been around Wallace School and down Oak Road, Oak Road is one of the worst roads in the city of Vineland to walk down. And I live right near Oak Road and have for a long time and, um, I am even afraid to walk down Oak Road. We have sidewalks now on Oak Road and the board has, we have been vocal about obtaining sidewalks throughout the city. And, um, what was the second part of that question, Dawn?
Um, just how do you think the issue should be addressed? Do you have any ideas about how to address that issue?
I, I think just continually putting pressure on the city, the county, and the state to provide safe walkways for our children. Our children deserve it and I believe the money is there to do it and we need to do it. And that's pretty much the end of that story.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sabrana, state regulations require teachers must be provided opportunities to hone and increase their skills on a consistent basis. What are your ideas on how to implement those opportunities?
Well, first, it's important for us to have the best teachers in our classroom and have, have them be well-trained and we make a strong effort to retain them. As far as individual, um, programs, I think we have to provide them with every opportunity to learn and grow so they can do a better job in the classroom.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Acosta, why do you think the Vineland School District suffers from a budget shortfall year after year?
Based on the information that I have received, um, the Vineland Public School Boards in the past, um, have not implemented any tax increases. I think prior to this year, I think it had been, could be more than 16 years since taxpayers received or were requested to pay extra money towards the school district budget. Unfortunately, uh, state funding and federal funding hasn't really grown at all, if, if not at all. State funding has been flat for the last number of years. We have the issue of health insurance that continues to grow. Every year, we provide health insurance to every full-time employee of the Vineland Public School District. This year alone, I believe that the increase was somewhere in, over 12, 13, 14 percent. Those numbers continue to grow, our expenses continue to grow, and yet, our funding remains the same. There is no way that we can continue, um, to cut and cut and cut services at the detriment of our children. At some point in time, we have to come up with creative, effective ways to continue to obtain additional funding by way of grants, by way of, uh, community donations, um, and if need be, in a very responsible way, by way of tax increases.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Boardley, Vineland High School's graduation rate has decreased from 96 percent to 75 percent over five years. What do you think needs to be done to improve this rate?
Well, I, I go back to curriculum. I think kids would stay in school if there were things that pique some interest. Not all kids are studious kids, um, and I, and I understand that. But I also think that if we had more opportunities for kids to develop into the person that they want to be through school, um, learning more about, you know, how the real world operates, um, a lot of, my own daughter feels, a lot of things that she learns in school are not going to translate into the real world. So interacting with businesses or, uh, programs that would teach them why they need to learn these skills, uh, I think would entice a lot more students to remain in school, um, to make them better students and better citizens.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Cardona, as a recent high school graduate, do you think most Vineland students are well-prepared for life after high school?
I would say yes. If all of the, if a student was there and was willing to learn and did learn the great education that Vineland provides, then yes, they would be prepared to continue on in life. It, it's not the district this time. It's not that the district has done anything wrong. The district is doing great and students that are there to learn, learn everything that they need to, but I guess it's those students that aren't willing to learn or don't really want to be at the school. Maybe they're falling short in some areas and they aren't prepared for life after high school. But for the most part, the majority of students from the high school, I would say, are prepared for life afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Carter, do you have any ideas about how to improve parent involvement in the school district?
Uh, well, like Cedric was saying, at board meetings, there is, you know, a very small turnout, but I believe that that's something, you know, that's something that, to, to be expected. Uh, we need involvement in other activities, you know, there are, um, the parent-teacher organizations at the schools that don't have very high turnouts. It starts at a very small level, you know, school activities, uh, you know, family fitness nights or, um, you know, Halloween parties or school dances, um, plays, things like that, to get parents involved at the, at the school level. You know, I feel that if you get the parents involved, then the kids have more ambition to want to learn and be involved. All right, um, can I go back and, uh, elaborate on Mr. Boardley's question as well?
Uh, which, which question was that?
About the, um, about the, the students' learning or...
Uh, not at this time, but if you want to include it in your closing remarks, that's fine. Yeah, thank you. Mr. Holmes, as I'm sure you know, we've talked a lot about the, the Vineland School System budget and it's quite large and complicated. Could you tell us what experience you have working with any kind of budgets and how you would evaluate a budget to determine if it's good for the district?
Um, I'm 18, so my parents take care of my budget. I just spend my own money. But there are nine members on the school board and I believe with their help, I will receive insight on the budget and learn how to, how it works and all the things that go inside the budget.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings, uh, we talked a little bit about tax revenue for, to, uh, help the budget and the Vineland School District has seldom increased tax revenue over the past two decades. What is your view on a tax increase to ensure students' needs are met?
I am, I'm against raising taxes, but I think the position that we are in as a school board, it is our duty to raise taxes and I know that's not the popular thing to say up here right now, but I'm being honest. We had a 2 percent tax increase for our last budget and the state doesn't see that as us being responsible for our budget. So we need to increase our taxes, showing the state that we're doing our part. And in us doing our part, then the state will say, okay, they're doing their part, now we're going to help. And this is, this is a, a long, this is going to be a long road, or as it's said in East Vineland, a long road aho. We, we, we have a long way to go to, um, increase our, our money from the state. And, uh, our first step was the 2 percent increase and I think we need to raise again another 2 percent this year and I don't want to pay it. I don't want to pay it, but I have to feel that this is an investment in our future, our children. I, I mean, I don't want to quote Michael Jackson, but our children are our future and we need to invest in them. And a, a small increase this year and maybe a small increase the year after, and, you know, soon we'll be on our way to providing the education for these children that is necessary. And I am not a proponent for increasing taxes.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana, in the area of board performance, what are the results that you believe are most important and how do you think the board should be held accountable for those results?
Gee, I was hoping to answer the tax question.
You sure?
New Jersey School Boards has a, a robust program of training for board members. Over the 20 years I've been working at the district, I've seen that process unfold. Uh, I think it's a good platform for, uh, training of board members and also for, to create a, some sort of a rubric for evaluation. And I, I think that should continue. I think the board has established the history of having retreats where they get together and do goal-setting, which is another, uh, process that definitely works and should continue. And I think that there's a, probably with nine people in that group, there's a lot of self-evaluation and evaluation of others that goes on almost on a regular basis. I would expect that to continue as well.
Okay, thank you. This concludes the question and answer portion of our program and each candidate will now have a time to give us their closing statement. It will be 90 seconds and we will start with Ms. Acosta.
I'd like to reiterate my thanks to the Vineland Chamber of Commerce for having this event and giving us the opportunity for the public to get to know, um, each of us as candidates for the Vineland, uh, Public School Board. The reason why I have chosen to run for school board is because I genuinely believe that education is the key to every child's future. We live in a city where poverty is a reality for over 60 percent of our children attending the Vineland Public Schools. This is a community that is culturally diverse and I believe that my background, um, first and foremost, as a Vineland Public School graduate, um, my background as an attorney, and also, more importantly, my strong belief that we have to give back to our community, really inspires me each and every day to try to do the best that I can for the children. And if elected, I will continue to work very diligently, to work cooperatively with my fellow board members, with administration, with teachers and children, to ensure that they are receiving the best education possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boardley.
As a taxpayer and a parent of three children that go to Vineland schools, uh, I've been dedicated my adult life to giving back to children, um, specifically my own, but also all the kids that are around my children. Uh, that's why I've dedicated time to coaching, uh, time to being on boards that affect children. I believe if we bring a positive influence to children, children will give that positive influence back to their community. Uh, I was always afforded positive influences through sports, uh, and I'm doing my work to give back. As a taxpayer, I along with Mr. Jennings, I do not like to pay more taxes than I already do. But unfortunately, that's a necessity in the time that we're facing with the state and the federal government constantly cutting back support for our schools and for other government necessities that we have. When it comes to children, I believe that, you know, in my personal life, I will sacrifice a, a small tax hike, uh, to give back to these children. A positive atmosphere for children is going to lead to a world of success for them. And if elected, I look forward to working with the board members to ensure that our education in Vineland continues to move forward, uh, that we're fiscally responsible to not only the taxpayers, but also to the children, to make sure that they have a quality education. So, and I, I also like to increase and develop new ways to keep education interesting to children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardona.
Um, I would again like to thank everyone that helped make this night possible. I would also like to thank my parents and my teachers and God for making me the man I am today, for without them, I wouldn't be here. Um, I believe that my running mates and I, having just graduated, bring a fresh perspective to the board and if elected, we will make sure to do the, everything in our power to make this district even greater than it already is. We are here to, to serve the people. We, we realize that, that elected officials are to serve the people, not to serve themselves. And I hope that this November, when you think of a good candidate, you think of me. So please vote for me this November. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter.
This year, I along with my running mate Cedric Holmes and Xavier Cardona wished to set an unimaginable precedent. Never in Vineland history has an 18-year-old served on the Board of Education and with the help and the support of the people of this great city of Vineland, this November could be historic. Vineland is an amazing town, but unfortunately is given a bad name too many times. Children in our schools are taught that when they graduate, that they must go away to college and not return because Vineland has nothing to offer. Vineland and Cumberland County are currently at the bottom of all of the right lists and at the top of all of the wrong lists. When people leave the city, jobs leave the city, and when people and jobs leave the city, the city loses its vision. The 2010 census showed that only 13.7 percent of residents in Vineland hold a bachelor's degree. In my opinion, uh, good jobs do not come unless there's a good school system. Unemployment rates in Vineland are extremely high and nothing will be better unless we revitalize Vineland's education and convince college graduates to move back and raise their families here. Thank you for this amazing opportunity to come before you all and speak and I, and I urge you this November 3rd to vote Cardona Holmes Carter for Vineland Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes.
Again, thank you all for coming out tonight. Thanks to my mom, who's here. I envision a school system with safety and security for all of our students and staff, one without an achievement gap, which allows every student from each level to succeed, one that wholeheartedly supports community involvement and participation. This is a dream that we at Cardona Holmes Carter wish to make a reality. We are the future. Tonight, you have three 2015 graduates before you and who would ever thought that? We are here to get involved and make an impact on the younger children of today. Let's continue to make our school district safe, great. I seek your vote and ask that you vote for me and my running mates for the Vineland Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jennings.
I am extremely honored to be up here before you with these fine people, all great candidates. Uh, it's going to be very hard to choose. Um, I just want to say that, I'm going to use my cliche, I'm not done yet. I have things that I'm doing, that I'm involved in, that I need to finish. And, um, a lot of it is with the Facilities Committee and with this budget. We have a lot of, a lot of loose ends that we need to tie down and, and I have the experience and I've been involved in many, multiple parts of these processes. Um, I've heard the words proud, I've heard the words parent involvement, um, I heard the words, we have an education to offer in the city of Vineland. But the words I'm saying is, I am responsible to the student, the taxpayer, the teacher. This is a large district. We have a very good superintendent, we have a fantastic president, a great vice president, we have a fantastic board right now. And, um, I think it would be in the best interest of the taxpayers and the teachers and the students to try to keep it the, the way it is as much as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Sabrana.
Again, thank you for the chamber and everyone who turned out tonight, and also for everyone who helped create this event. My sole interest in seeking this position is to help create an educational environment that meets the needs of all of our children. Each child should have a support network that begins with family involvement, the attention and caring of our dedicated teachers, and the services offered by our guidance counselors, healthcare professionals, and social workers. I'm excited, but I'm not apprehensive about the challenges that lie ahead. And I pledge, if elected, to serve with enthusiasm and passion tempered by the patience that can only come from decades of experience. I respectfully ask voters to consider voting for me when they go to the polls on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of the Greater Vineland Chamber of Commerce, I want to thank the people that came to tonight's forum, but I especially want to thank the candidates. Your answers were thoughtful, and it's obvious you were well-prepared, and we appreciate that. But we also applaud your decision to be a candidate. It's very commendable, as it indicates you're interested in the education and the welfare of the children in our community. So thank you so much for doing that. Let's give them a round of applause. And please remember, it's very important to exercise your right to vote, so go to the polls on Election Day, November 3rd, and let your voice be heard. Thank you and good evening.